Alright, welcome everyone to the 2018 Florida Department of Transportation Five-Year Work Program Public Hearing, our Facebook livestream. I'm Rodolph Roman, your community outreach specialist for District Six. This is an opportunity for you to learn about our proposed projects that will be funded and carry out here at District Six during the next five years. Now you can view tonight's meeting materials by visiting our website, Now stay tuned for the work program presentation portion which will start at 6:45 PM. You can provide comments on our comment box right below the Facebook livestream. And you can provide these comments as mentioned below, and if time permits, we will be able to go ahead and answer it right here during our Q&amp;A portion. This is an opportunity for you to formally present your comments, opinions, and ideas about the projects for the record. Now you can also send in your comments by mailing it at 1000 Northwest 111th Avenue, Room 6134, Miami, Florida 33172. Make sure that you address it to the District Six Communications Office, or you can shoot us an email. That's wpcomments@dotstateFL.us, or give us a call, 305-470-5349. Make sure that you hit that like button on our Facebook page, right here in My FDOT Miami, or follow us on Twitter, that's @MyFDOT_Miami. You can visit our website, fdotmonroe.com, to learn more about upcoming and ongoing projects. Now you can use the hashtag #D6WP tonight during our livestream. Now throughout the evening, we will be interviewing several Florida Department of Transportation staff members and engineers who will be informing us of upcoming and ongoing roadway projects. Now I'm gonna step aside real quickly here, as you can see, we have several informational tables featuring many projects in Monroe County. Project staff is here until 8:00 PM tonight, and they're here to answer any questions that you may have. Some of the projects that we are featuring today include the Cal Key Channel Bridge Rehabilitation Project, the detailed damage inspection report projects, the high-intensity activated crosswalks, better known as the HAWKS, taking place on State Road 5, also the Seven Mile Bridge Project, landscaping and reserving projects, and many, many more. Now as mentioned, we have many other individuals that are joining us here. Governmental organizations are also on board as well that are joining us, but we're gonna get things going in just a few seconds with our FDOT District Six Director of Transportation and Development, Mr. Harold Desdunes, and just a few. He will be joining us, but once again, you're welcome to come here. We're on the until 8:00 PM this evening, and so we're gonna welcome Mr. Harold as I'm back here on screen. Mr. Harold Desdunes, the Director of Transportation and Development, they'll be joining us here to, we're gonna ask him a couple of questions as far as the work program as he's going to. Harold, thank you very much for joining us here on our Facebook livestream.
Thank you.
Alright, Governor Ryan here and join me. So Harold, how does this evening event tie into the department's mission to provide a safe transportation system that moves people and goods and enhances the economic activity and preserves the environment and of the communities?
Rodolph, I think this is a perfect opportunity for the public to see what we're doing in Monroe County. A lot of times, we typically do not have an opportunity to meet, and they don't have an opportunity to see the entire Five-Year Work Program. So what we do is we showcase some of the key projects that we have in Monroe County, and in addition to that, we provide an entire scope for the next five years. Especially Monroe County. Monroe County, US-1 is the lifeline of Monroe County for the mainland, for the mainland. Therefore, when it comes to mobility, safety, and preservation, it is key that we maintain US-1. So with this meeting here, they're not only seeing what we're doing for the next five years, but they have an opportunity to meet with the transportation professionals to get input, and to get input from them and feedback in terms of what we're doing specifically.
Wonderful. Thank you so very much for your time. I know we have a very busy night, and I appreciate your time and explaining to us as far how important it is to come to the 2018 work program. Very important. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Thank you, thank you. And now we're gonna bring in Ms. Antonette Adams. She is the Work Program Administrator. All right, Antonette. Alright, so please explain to just a little bit so our folks watching on the Facebook, understand what is the work program and how does this work?
Well, as you know, the work program actually is just a listing of projects that the department plans to undertake during the next five years or so. And how it starts is during the summer, what we typically do is we meet with our elected officials to ensure that they understand what we were able to accomplish for them in the past. Also, in the office, what we typically do is we also update all of our cost estimates, whether it's construction estimates and our rate-of-way estimates, to ensure that we have the most up-to-date information in the system as it relates to project cost. After that, the work program is balanced based on the allocations that we receive, and then we present it in a form like this at a public hearing to ensure that all of our public are aware of what we were able to accomplish during this particular time. Afterwards, the work program statewide, all of the DOTs are rolled up into one gigantic statewide work program that gets presented to the legislature and various other committees in Central Office or Tallahassee. The governor, they vote on it, the legislature passes the budget, and after the secretary adopts the work program in July, we start this all over again.
So how does the work program help District Six prioritize the projects and programs?
It helps us in that, one of the things that we're very proud of is that we actually have an opportunity to work with our local partners, and that's very important to us because the work program is not developed in a vacuum. We work with our partners to ensure that we're meeting their needs as well as maintaining the state's highway systems as well.
And now, as we're getting closer, then I hear a very informative presentation at 6:45 PM, so we're just about 20 and something changed, but what is in the horizon for us looking forward?
Actually, we're excited to say, I just wanna back up a little bit, we're excited to say that during this last work program cycle, we received a little bit of an increase in terms of allocations. During the development process, we actually had an opportunity to see some of our costs increase. However, we were able to mitigate those changes, so we're very excited about that. In Monroe County, however, we've seen that their allocations increased actually 23% from last year to this year. So they're getting a little bit more money, and I think they'll be a little bit happy about that. But in the future, next year, I think this process is gonna be on what we call an accelerated cycle, so we're gonna cram everything that we're doing right now into four months as opposed to the six months. But you know what? We're bound and determined to make the best work program possible as we typically do every year.
Awesome, Antonette. Thank you very much, and we look forward to your presentation just a few. Thank you, Antonette. Thank you. Okay, so from Antonette, we're gonna move forward now and give you a little look at what's going on here at our 2018 Monroe County Work Program, as we're gonna take a walk to show you, and take you inside, you know what it is. It's an opportunity again for folks to come and learn about the projects, what it includes, your input. We always look forward to your inputs, and I'd like to remind you that you can provide those comments right there on our comment box below throughout the evening, or you can send us an email, wpcomments@dotstateFL.us. So, we're gonna walk now towards the tables as we can see. We're gonna walk our way through in just a few seconds here. And I'd like to mention, some of, as we walk through the room, some of our FDOT priorities that the department takes is other top priorities is safety, the preservation of the state highway system, or existing FDOT roads. The department also prioritizes capacity improvements and other projects such as landscaping, intelligent transportation systems, and service patrols. We coordinate directly with federal and local governments, including transportation planning organizations, county commissions, and municipalities. Transit airports, seaports, rail, bicycle, and pedestrian travel programs also receive state and federal transportation funds. Now in just a few seconds, we're going to speak to Mr. Pablo Roscoe. He is the District Six Structures Maintenance Engineer. As you can see, Pablo right now is giving a little preview of what we anticipate with our Cal Key Channel Bridge Rehabilitation Project, which will be starting very soon. So we're gonna meet with Pablo in just a few seconds as he's waiting for us. Pablo, how are you? Thanks so much for your time. I saw you're busy speaking to some of our members of the community. So Pablo, can you just explain to us real quickly, I understand there's 58 state bridges in Monroe County, and I understand that your team is responsible for inspecting these and maintaining state bridges throughout the district. Now can you give me a brief overview of the bridge inspection process?
Sure. Our maintenance of bridges consists of three sections: inspections, repairs, and rehabilitations. So the inspection, we're in charge of inspecting all bridges in Monroe County, including the local bridges. So our state program for maintenance of bridges starts with the inspection. So we inspect bridges every two years, and some of them, depending on their condition, we increase the frequency. But from the inspection report, then we go into planning projects either for repairs, so we have contractors that help us do repairs on bridges, or we go into bigger projects, like rehabilitation projects. So the way we do it is, since this is a work program, you know, every year we review the condition of the bridges, and we plan projects for the future for rehabilitations. The ones that don't need rehabilitation, we decide to do repairs. So right now, we have some projects, we have like the Irma Bridge Repair Projects. There will be nine bridges that were damaged by Irma. They're safe, but we need to do some repairs. So we are just about to let a project in this coming calendar year. We also have some other planned projects like the Long Key Bridge, Linnon Valley Bridge, where we're planning some bigger repairs that for the most part of it, you know, people won't see it because it's under the bridge, and they don't see it when they go through the bridge. So for the last 10 years, we have done many rehabilitation of those VCA bridges. Not all of them, but you know, many of them. And, you know, people don't notice that that was done. Why? Because the rehabilitation usually don't impact traffic that much. As, you know, maybe others like Cal Key that will have some impacted traffic, that's one that will be noticeable by the public. But that's how our program works, so we inspect the bridges, and based on those inspections, we plan for repairs or rehabilitations.
Talked about rehabilitation projects. One of them that we're featuring today is the Cal Key Channel Bridges, which soon will be starting rehabilitation. Can you just tell us a little bit about the project and what it entails?
Okay, so the project, we came out after, you know, reviewing the reports and looking at the bridge.
Our camera's gonna try to focus a little bit on the maps here as Pablo speaks.
So the project, the bridge consists of an outbound bridge coming out from Key West, and an inbound bridge, you know, coming into Key West. So what we found is that three out of the nine span on the bridge were in very bad shape. So we started doing repairs, and we got to a point that the condition of the bridge made it a rehabilitation, and some members of the bridge needs to be replaced. Why? Because it's more cost-effective. The repairs were not gonna last as long as we wanted. So if we do a repairs, we'll have to come back in five, six years, and then the capacity of the bridge continued to decrease. So the best decision was to replace those three spans that had been affected by excessive saltwater. When we see the rest of the bridge, it's in good shape. It's just those three spans that we call it, and that's mainly the navigational channel. A curious case here is that some of the wave runners should water up into the bridge. Even if they go really slow, we have noticed that they should water up. And when we were doing repairs, the last year and a half, we have been doing repairs on the bridge. And we noticed that we deviated traffic to the span two, and after some more analysis by corrosion especially, we found out that that span is also already contaminated with salts. So the project will consist right now on a 370-day construction to replace those three spans, and we're putting an incentive so the contractor can build it in less time. So we're shooting for 250 days. So we're still in the process of design, and we're still trying to refine as much as possible to reduce that amount of time. So up to date, the maintenance of traffic will be two lanes coming out of Key West, like outbound Key West, and one lane coming in. So there's gonna be some affecting traffic, but we're still analyzing traffic collections or traffic data and analyzing the best options possible for the bridge. And we're also trying to avoid the peak time on, you know, that Key West has or all the Keys has, which is usually from December through April. So our project is targeted to start construction in April and be completed before Christmas Day. So that's our plan for now, and we hope that we continue improving it.
Wonderful, Pablo. And again, we invite you here to come. We're on to 8:00 PM. This is just one of the projects that we're featuring, Pablo, as he informed us about this project. He can go ahead and give you some more details as you arrive here. Pablo, thanks so much for your time. Appreciate it, and thank you for the good work. Okay Pablo, we're gonna move forward now, as we move forward to more of the tables that we have featured. Step out real quickly here as we move forward. Again, we're on here until 8:00 PM, and we'll be soon be interviewing other individuals that'll be joining us. And I'd like to mention that District Six covers Miami Dade County and Monroe County, which is home to more than 2.6 million residents who travel more than 56 million vehicle miles per day. More information about the District Six that I'd like to share with us watching us here on Facebook Live. And I'd like to remind you that at 6:45 PM, we will start our presentation portion. And again, we encourage you to provide your comments on our comment box below. You can provide that there. Now the state road system includes 700 miles of roadway, which when all lanes are considered equals close to 3,000 lane miles. Our residents are served by seven public airports, 78 private airports, two rail lines, two deep-water ports, and three fixed guideway systems, which include the Tri-Rail, Metro-Rail, and Metro-Mover. And just a few, I'm gonna meet Ms. Natalie Garganta. She's a project manager for the detailed damage inspection report. As I'm gonna walk here, Natalie, thanks so much for your time. I know, let's get out of the projector screen real quick. That's right here. Alright, here we go. This is live TV. So Natalie, Hurricane Irma, as we understand, damaged certain parts of the Florida Keys last year, and I know FDOT has been working very, very hard on repairing some of these damages. Can you explain some of the work that is going on and is scheduled to take place?
Yes, we received funding from the federal government for the Hurricane Irma projects. We began design in May of this year, and we have accelerated our schedules, and we'll be letting them, letting the contracts for construction in August of 2019. We currently have 52 projects, and they will be grouped in four different contracts for four different contractors based on their location, the lower Keys, middle Keys, and upper Keys. And they range from, you know, fixing heritage trails to erosion, water washouts, fence repairs for the environmental fence that we have on the 18-mile stretch. So there's a wide range of different types of projects and complexities, but the grand majority of them will be completed for letting for construction and let in August of 2019.
So next year, we should start seeing some of this work start?
Start, yes. Construction will start.
And what is some of, I know you've mentioned there's a lot of projects out here, but what is the time length? What are we seeing? Will everything be pretty much concluded?
I would say within a year, everything should already be, between August 2019 and August 2020, construction should be complete.
Wonderful, Natalie.
Inception, we have one project along Sealed Beach that has a longer construction time, but the grand majority of them will be constructed within the year.
Wonderful, Natalie. And again, I advise anyone, I invite anyone to visit our website, fdotmonroe.com for information on these projects, as soon they will be in construction. Thank you very much, Natalie, for it. I really appreciate it. Okay, now we're gonna move forward and meet our district landscape architect, Kevin Schott, who's gonna give us a brief overview of our landscape program and how the department works together with local municipality and also on these landscaping projects. As you can see, many folks are coming to the venue to check out some of the information available here this evening. Kevin is gonna join us. Kevin, come on. Alright, Kevin, how are you? Thanks so much for joining us. We're here in Monroe County as mentioned. Hey Kevin, no, we're okay. Join us here. It goes, we're gonna get away a little bit from the lighting. So Kevin, give us a brief overview of the landscape program and how it works together with local municipalities. And tell us a little bit about the ongoing projects landscape-wise here in Monroe County.
Okay, well, generally speaking, we gauge how much landscaping based off of how much roadway, okay? It's, that's a general kind of assessment that we do. We base it off of the total construction budget for the roadway and bridge projects, which is, and landscaping receives about 1.5% of that. And from those projects, we also kind of gauge where those particular projects may need some landscape after a roadway project or bridge project comes through. Other projects are then also generated by public input or feedback that we receive from local officials or from the public groups, you know, down here in the Keys especially. We have the Florida Keys Scenic Corridor Alliance, which I met with them this year and received some great input from them. We currently do have three active projects in design in Sugarloaf Key, Cajo Key, those are two kind of back-to-back right next to each other from mile markers 15 to 23 or so. And then we have another one in fiscal year, I believe it's in '21 is when it's being constructed, and that one was deferred actually, but it's in Isla Marada. It was deferred to '21. It's gonna be in Isla Marada, following some of our roadway improvements that are, those roadway improvements are following improvements from impacts to the hurricane essentially, so.
So tell me a little bit about how you work and our department works with local municipalities to put these things together?
Right, right. The municipalities portion, well, it's a great place to work with DOT. We really appreciate the locals working with us, and especially here in the Keys, very important that they know that we have grants available. That's one way that alternatively that they could work with FDOT Landscape. They can apply for grants. The grant applications are received every October 1st, every year. The grant applications can be found online, but if anybody needs some guidance, I do have some, you know, paperwork here that informs.
We'll walk to the table just a little bit and show it to the camera just a few.
Yeah, it's, you know, they could also contact me for that information. It's a little bit dry because it's black and white on paper, and you know, it's text and everything, but if they wanted to apply for a grant, you know, that's one way that the municipalities can work with us. It typically requires, you know, a maintenance agreement and some kind of resolution, however they go about, you know, coming to those terms. Every municipality or local seems to handle it slightly differently, but you know, in that process and the application and review processes, it handled out of a combination of our office and Central Office in Tallahassee and the DLAs around the state. We all review those plans. And the other way would be, so that's one way is grants. The other, another kind of route that locals can take is providing their input on wanting a landscape project, and then entering into a maintenance agreement with the FDOT to maintain that landscaping. So generally speaking, on our projects that are landscape, we call them landscape standalone projects. Generally speaking, we install native kind of self-maintaining landscaping, you know, Mother Nature kind of takes care of it, to go above and beyond that, to add specialty plant material or irrigation, or sometimes even hardscaping. Those things can all be included in a grant project with, to certain limitation, you know, that can be spelled out if we engage in a conversation back and forth. I can go into further detail. But the MMOAs or the maintenance agreements would be tagged or tied on to one of our projects, and it would provide us a mechanism, the DOT and the locals, a mechanism to work together to install something what in kind of general terms would be considered above and beyond the general FDOT landscape installation. And like I said, it's not just landscape. It could be, it could include some hardscape. It could include some irrigation, depending on the parameters, you know. Those MMOAs are handled out of our maintenance department, but we work closely with maintenance on executing those with the local agency and, you know, providing any kind of assistance that the local agencies might need to get that involvement, to be tied to an FDOT project. So I would highly encourage local agencies, especially here in Monroe, grant application every October or a maintenance agreement with the FDOT on one of our landscape projects. And I look forward to working with them in the future. We are working with several right now. Our Isla Marada project that's in design right now does have an MMOA, and several others in the past that we've already constructed.
And they can shoot us an email, wpcomments@dotstateFL.us, if they have any questions regarding to what Kevin was speaking. And they can always visit our website, fdotmonroe.com for information on projects. So Kevin, I mean, thanks so very much. Let's take him through here. I'm gonna walk with Kevin to his table just so folks can see and understand what we're got as Kevin's gonna walk us through some of the information as we are going on, just a few seconds here. So as you can see, some of the stuff that's available here, Kevin, what do we have available here, Kevin?
These are some kind of landscape guidelines, if you will, for District Six. Some of this could be applied throughout the state, but I'm sure that everybody watching today right now is probably more interested in Monroe County, which we do have a section of this document that specifically refers to landscaping in Monroe.
And can they obtain this as well if they're asked for?
Well, yeah, a PDF copy would be available. I don't think this is hosted at all online currently, but I have been in discussions of possibly some light revisions on this in the future, and then maybe even hosting it online. But again, that's a conversation that I'm involved in. I'm not, there's no guarantees at this time, but, you know, if we did receive comments on it, then another thing about, I wanna say, the Florida Keys Scenic Corridor Alliance, I've been working with them also on trying to get some material, plant material that they're familiar with or, you know, kind of a, I guess, a general default list. I don't wanna go too far as to say that that is the plant material that we would be using. It's not that, but what I'm getting at is we really take to heart the local opinion. So, you know, I've been here for a year and a half now, and I look forward to working with the locals to further kind of develop that type of thing. The other stuff we have at the table here is, like I said, it's pretty dry material. We have some details in, on how FDOT goes about installing plant material, and we have another document that talks about grant applications and how to apply and all that sort of thing, so.
Well Kevin, thanks so very much for taking us a little breakdown of what's available here for the folks at the 2018 Monroe County Work Program. Thanks so much for your time, Kevin. Thank you, thank you. And just a few, we're about to start our presentation at 6:45 PM. Let me read you some tidbits here. Now, did you know, on any given day in the United States, 660,000 is the estimated number of drivers using electronic devices while driving during daylight hours? Make sure you put your phone down. It can wait. Don't text and drive. And just a few, in about a little less than about 10 minutes, we're gonna start with our presentation. Now for information, make sure to visit fdotmiamidate.com. And now, we're going to begin our presentation portion. Again, I advise to provide your comments on our comment box below, and if time permits, we will answer it right here during our Q&amp;A portion. You can also email your comments to wpcomments@dotstateFL.us. Again, we'll be right back with more interviews after the presentation, which will start right now.
Good evening. Welcome to the Five-Year Ten-year Work Program Public Hearing. Does everyone hear me? Okay. Hi, my name is Harold Desdune, Director of Transportation Development for DOT, and welcome in joining us tonight, especially the fact it's on a Friday night, 6 o'clock. So if you're here, you're definitely a diehard transportation, have interest in transportation, so it's great. But before we start, I'd like to recognize a few individuals that's with us today, and I know all these individuals are pretty busy for them to be here, and we really appreciate it. First, I'd like to recognize Vice Mayor, Mayor Deb Gillis. Billis Van Leeuwen. Thank you, thank you for joining us. Also Sarah Craven, Assistant to Holly Rashine. And Kevin Wilson. Assistant County Administrator. And Philip Herring, Administrative Assistant to Mayor Norman Anderson, City Platoon. I always love coming down here because I think we get a lot more comments and a lot more engagement than Miami-Dade County. We do something similar in Miami-Dade County. But before we go through this process of sharing with you what, what we have for the five-year tentative work program, I will be passing this baton. And, and I'd like to welcome to, to my team, the District Program Management Administrator, Antoinette Adams. Thank you. I'm joined by the Bank of Miami-Dade County. Apologize. Antoinette?
Thank you, Harold. This is. Sorry about that. And again, welcome everyone, and we thank you for taking the time to be with us on this evening. We realize that, you know, Friday nights are really, you know, tough for individuals, especially for, you know, those who have kids, but we thank you very much for coming down with us and being with us, okay? So we're going to get started. And we want to also welcome those on Facebook Live and the webinar who are joining us this afternoon. And again, thank you for your participation as well. Okay? So I'll be giving you a brief presentation of the department's work program and how we actually got to this point, and just to give you a few highlights of the things that we're able to accomplish in Monroe County. So as you know, the Florida Department of Transportation mission is to provide a safe transportation system that ensures the mobility of people and goods, enhances economic prosperity, and preserves the quality of our environment and our communities. The department's top priorities remain safety and the preservation of its state roadway systems. The department also prioritizes capacity improvements and other projects such as freight mobility, intelligent transportation systems, and landscaping projects. We coordinate directly with the federal and local governments, including county, county commissions, transportation planning organizations, and various other municipalities. Transit, airport, seaports, rail, bicycle, and pedestrian travel programs also receive state and local transportation funds. District 6 covers both Miami-Dade and Monroe Counties, which is home to more than 2.6 million residents who travel more than 34 million vehicle miles per day. The state road includes, the state road system includes 700 miles of roadway, which when all lanes are considered, total in excess of 3,000 lane miles. Our residents are also served by seven public airports, 78 private airports, two rail lines, two deep water ports, and three fixed guideway systems, which include Tri-Rail, Metro-Rail, and the Metro Luber. Now let's take a look at the various funding sources that DOT receives in order to accomplish its work plan. The adopted budget for District 6's five-year tentative work program is $3.7 billion. 58% of those funds come from state resources, 32% of those funds come from federal assistance, and the remaining is from toll revenue, right-of-way, and state infrastructure bank bonds, as well as contributions from other local entities. FDOT District 6's work program allocates funding to the following categories, as you can see on the screen. 73% is allocated towards product, what we call product, and product is considered construction projects, your transit-type project, freight logistic passenger operation-type projects, and right-of-way purchase. 13% is allocated towards product support, which is your environmental projects, your PE or your design projects, right-of-way support, and your CEI phases. 14% allocated to operation and maintenance of our state highway, and $2 million, which is 0%, is allocated to our fixed capital outlay, which is for the department's building and grounds facilities. FDOT District 6's work program allocates $2.7 billion towards the product category. We're going to break this down a little further. So we see from the chart that 66% of District 6's products contains construction improvement projects. 24% of the product is dedicated to freight logistic and passenger operations, which exceeds the statutory requirement of 15%, so we're, we're excited about that this year. And the remaining product is allocated towards right-of-way and other project, product categories, which includes some of the state-funded grant programs, which is Scott, the small county outreach programs, which Monroe County does participate in, and also the county incentive program as well. Another look at the $1.7 billion construction category reveals the following. 69% is allocated toward capacity-type projects. 10% is allocated towards the public-private partnership reimbursement to the concessionaire. As you know, a few years back, District 6 actually built a bridge, built a tunnel, and we have to pay the concessionaire back. So we're in the fourth of, of 30 years in repaying the concessionaire. So 10% of our allocations is going towards that endeavor. The remaining budget is allocated towards resurfacing, bridge, and repair and safety improvements. $652 million of the freight logistic and passenger operations is reinvested into the system. Of that, $311 million is going towards transit improvements. The remaining budget is distributed amongst the mode, other modes of transportation, including aviation, rail, seaport, and intermodal categories. And this is where Monroe, Monroe County stands. As you can see, we have dissected the $137 million that Monroe County receives of this tentative work program into the various categories. And as you can see, the top categories are resurfacing, which is our preservation, aviation, bridge, work, and emergency. We'll get into that a little later on. The district's work program is a tentative list of projects that will be funded and carry out in District 6 during the next five-year period. It is the department's anticipated work program in Miami-Dade and Monroe Counties, as stated earlier, and it is developed annually. As projects are identified, schedules are developed based on our priorities. Each of the adopted, each year the adopted or the current year work program, projects are completed and a new fifth year is added on. Now, this is our work program cycle, very briefly. We actually start the process, even though it says June through October, we start in-house phases in May, March, and May, which we, as the department, we look at all of the projects that are slated in our work program. We update all of the cost estimates associated with those projects to ensure that we have the most up-to-date cost information in our system regarding each of our projects. Then June through October, what we try to do is meet with the county, the elected officials, and we explain to them and convey to them what we were able to accomplish for them during the last tentative work program cycle. And also to receive any requests that they may have for us for the existing tentative work program cycle. Then in November, we have our public hearings, as we're having right now, conveying what we've done to the public. And then in December, what happens is we actually meet with the Miami-Dade TPO and the Monroe County Commissioners to get concurrence and acknowledgement of our work program. In January, Tallahassee compiles all of the work programs around the state, and in doing so, they create one statewide work program that they then submit to the various offices in Tallahassee. For example, the Governor's Office, the Department of Economic Opportunities, various offices. And that happens in February as well. There's certain, several submissions. In March, the Florida Transportation Commission conducts a statewide public hearing to receive comments on the statewide public hearing, and also the legislative session convened. In July, the Secretary of the Department of Transportation adopts the work program, and we start this process all over again. Now let's take a look at some of Monroe County, Monroe County's major projects that are underway or are planned in the tentative work program. And there's just one slide for this. The first one is the Old Seven Mile Bridge. The Old Seven Mile Bridge was deemed structurally deficient and closed to vehicular traffic. As a result, ferry services needed to access Pigeon Key. The proposed, the purpose of this project is to restore the structural capacity of the bridge, which will support the pedestrian load, typical emergency, and service vehicles, and small passenger shuttles. Work will be performed includes making repairs to existing railing, repairing the bridge deck, and above water ponds and piers, removing the abandoned bridge mounted, water main, and repairing the painted bridge and structural steel. Construction started actually in September 2016 and will last until September 2021. The estimated construction cost for this project is $38.1 million. Landscaping projects. We have several landscaping projects that are either underway or that are proposed in the tentative work program. Very first project that I want to just go over briefly with you, we have several that recently completed, one that recently completed is the Overseas Highway from Jerome Avenue to Smugglers Cove, and that was completed in June of 2018. We also have two more projects that are underway and they're slated to be completed soon. The very first one is the Overseas Highway from Pine Channel to Spanish Harbor. Work began on that in May of 2017. We also have the Overseas Highway at Summerlin Key from mile marker 23.69 to 25.40. Work for that has already started as well. And then we have two projects that are actually going to let, or we're going to receive bids on these particular projects, both in April of 2019. The first landscape project is Overseas Highway at Cajo Key, mile marker 20.42 to mile marker 23.48, and Overseas Highway at Sugarloaf Key from mile marker 15.46 to mile marker 20.14. We also have upcoming landscaping projects that are in our program. The very first one is Overseas Highway again from mile marker 77.47 to mile marker 81.44. Design for this particular project is underway and it's slated to go to construction in fiscal year 2022. We have another project that we added to the work program, which is again Overseas Highway from Boca Chica Canal to Shark Key. Design for this particular project is slated to begin in fiscal year 2020, with construction slated in fiscal year 2022. The pedestrian bridge from Founders Park in Isla Marada. This project consists of construction of a permanent pedestrian bridge over St. River 5 US1 Overseas Highway at Isla Marada, Founders Park, and Plantation Key. Some bridge features include reconstruction and realignment of the asphalt trail to provide pedestrian connections to the elevator and stairs at the bridge, widening and reconstruction of the existing paved shoulders, constructing roadside bearing walls, and modifying the soils. Design began on this particular project actually last year and is slated to go to construction in fiscal year 2020, which is next year. We also have the North Roosevelt Boulevard pedestrian improvements. In August, the department opened bids for a pedestrian safety enhancement project along St. River 5, North Roosevelt Boulevard in the city of Key West, which will encompass the installation of five mid-block pedestrian high-intensity active, activated crosswalks or hawks and streetlights. The project will modify five existing mid-block crossing locations along North Roosevelt Boulevard between North 24th and Third Streets. This project will upgrade streetlights, pedestrian signs, and high emphasis paved markings and asphalt pavements at those specific locations. Work will begin in February 2019, and the project duration is slated for approximately seven months with a total project cost of, construction cost of $1.6 million. And lastly, we wanted to put some emphasis on the Hurricane Irma projects. In September 2017, Hurricane Irma struck Monroe County with a devastating blow. The department's initial response was to perform ER emergency work on roadways, making them usable for everyone. Now we're embarking on a new phase of the repair work or permanent repair. Projects were grouped into various categories and scheduled to primarily let in fiscal year 2020, and we tried to advance the majority of those projects in the first quarter of fiscal year. So just to give you a brief idea of what we are, those type projects, the schedules are as follows. We have bridge repair projects that are slated actually to let in current year fiscal year 19, which is March 2019. We have some embankment washout, washout projects that are slated, slated in July and August of next year, and then some will go the following year, May 2020. There's some fence repair that will be let in September 19, guardrail repair in January of 20, and lighting repair that will be let in February of 2020. Please note that the signal work is complete and permanent sign repair is currently still underway. To date, the department has expended over $88.5 million for emergency work in the Keys, and we will continue to do so to ensure that the Keys get restored. The department coordinates with the following county partners to facilitate the decision-making process for Monroe County. Throughout the cycle, the department receives input from Monroe County staff and county commissioners for projects to be added to the work program. The Miami-Dade County TPO coordinates the plans of all transportation agencies listed on this slide. They incorporate this into its Transportation Improvement Plan, or TIP, which also has a five-year timeframe. It then prioritizes all projects for submission to the department for federal and state and some local funding as well. Now let's watch a video that further explains how the projects are developed in our work
The state of Florida has recently surpassed New York as the third-most populous state in the U.S. with nearly 20 million residents. Even more staggering, Florida has 100 million visitors coming to the beautiful sunshine state every year, and 50 million of these visitors arrive by car. Our infrastructure and planning are integral to the state's success, economic, and vitality. Transportation impacts where we live, work, and play. Helping meet the transportation needs of residents and visitors to this great state through staple and long-term planning is the primary responsibility of the Florida Department of Transportation. The Florida Department of Transportation plans, develops, and complements multimodal projects or infrastructure to meet the long-term transportation needs of Florida's residents and visitors through a stable work program. The FDOT consists of seven districts and the Florida Turnpike Enterprise. District 1, with a land area of nearly 12,000 square miles, represents 12 counties in southeast Florida. Its 1.8 million residents contribute to the 21 million miles traveled daily on its state highways. District 2 is home to more than 1.9 million residents. Its 18 counties cover nearly 12,000 square miles. Travelers on the state highway system log more than 43 million miles daily. District 3 represents Florida's panhandle. Its 1.4 million residents are spread over 16 counties and 11,500 square miles. Each day, motorists travel more than 26 million miles on state roads. Five counties make up District 4's 5,000 square miles. With 3.6 million residents, vehicles in District 4 travel more than 52 million miles daily. District 5 is one of the fastest-growing areas of the state. It covers nine counties, has nearly 9,000 square miles, and is home to nearly 4 million residents, log more than 55 million vehicle miles traveled daily. District 6 encompasses Miami-Dade and Monroe Counties in South Florida. The district is home to 2.6 million people. Its roads are traveled more than 31 million miles daily. District 7, with a land area of nearly 3,400 square miles, represents five counties with almost 2.9 million residents in the Tampa Bay area. Drivers in the district travel nearly 34 million miles daily. With 483 miles of beautifully maintained safe toll highways, Florida's turnpike system spans from Miami to Wildwood and includes toll facilities in South Florida, Orlando, and Tampa, as well as Lake County. On average, 2.3 million motorists use Florida's turnpike each day. On average, 2.3 million motorists use Florida's turnpike each day. Florida's Turnpike Enterprise is responsible for toll operations on all FDOT-owned and operated toll roads and bridges. This represents more than 600 miles of roadway and approximately 80% of all toll facilities in Florida. The existing transportation system within Florida is served by state-owned roadways, bridges, airports, deepwater seaports, rail lines, and transit agencies. FDOT maintains nearly 13,000 Central Lane miles and 6,783 bridges. Florida is home to 110,000 Central Lane miles of off-system roads and 5,381 off-system bridges, as well as 15 seaports, 129 public-use airports, two space ports with 10 launch facilities, and numerous passenger and rail freight carriers, including the Sun Rail, which runs from Orlando to Deverry, and the Tri-Rail, which runs from Miami to just north of West Palm Beach. FDOT's yearly transportation budget is more than $10 billion, and FDOT is only 25% federally funded. State and local transportation officials are also responsible for looking at areas of congestion and the cause of these reoccurring and non-reoccurring trouble areas, and must develop plans and strategies to solve these congestion problems. Plans and goals of each district are carried out in part by each district's five-year work program, the district's transportation plan. This program is developed by working with local governments, other agencies, and the public. The metropolitan planning organizations and local governments help to set transportation priorities for the department. The district funds the highest priority projects using state and federal funds and entering them into the work program. Keeping in mind there are funding constraints, and it may take time to fully fund these projects. This work program contains projects in different phases of production: planning, project development and environment, design, ride of leg, and construction. When a renewed road or bridge is being built, or the department is assisting other transportation agencies, each project goes through the phases of production. The official five-year work program is adopted July 1st by the Florida State Secretary of Transportation. July 1st is the first day in the state's fiscal year. The plan is adopted after the public hearings are held and public comments have been accepted. Local governments have endorsed the plan, and the Florida Transportation Commission and state legislatures have approved it. The plan also has stability. First, it is financially balanced. FDOT uses state and federal dollars that are forecasted in each fiscal year to fund projects that metropolitan planning organizations and county commissions have prioritized. Second, the plan is also stable because it funds the different phases of production to ensure the projects are moved through the schedules all the way through construction. Some projects are in the middle of the production process, some are just beginning, and some are near the end. As the district develops and updates each year's work program with residents and local governments, it is understood that next July 1st, the current or first year of the plan will have begun or is complete and will not show as proposed anymore. The new fifth year will be added on. The yearly update produces the 10 new five-year work program. The district works with the public and local governments to set priorities with this new five-year plan. New priorities are populated into the new fifth year. Adjustments in the first three years create stability issues. The work program assures we have a prioritized program of transportation choices that results in a better quality of life for the residents and visitors to this beautiful state.
Thank you for doing that, and if you have any questions in the future, the contact information is on the slide. Feel free to contact the department at any time should you have any questions. Right now, this actually concludes our presentation portion of the public hearing. We want to open up now for public comment and/or questions. For those of you joining on Facebook Live and/or the webinar, please submit your questions in the comment box that's appearing on your screen. For those of you in person, there are, there is a microphone in the aisle for your use. So if you have a question, just feel free to, you know, approach the microphone and ask your question and provide, and/or provide a comment. And please, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Right now, the floor is open for any comment and/or question. No questions? Do we have any questions online? Or comments online? No? We'll give it a few minutes to see. Yes?
I have a simple question. That on your work plan, the years have numbers in those columns, what do those numbers represent?
The numbers are the funding that we're able to allocate to each and every one of those projects, so, and they're cut off, I think, in the thousands, so that's actually the funding, and I believe the basis that we're able to allocate to each of those projects this year. And typically, as the slide shows, we, for the most part theoretically add projects in the new fifth, but this year we had a few more dollars or allocation, if you live at, or allocation that we received, and we're actually able to accommodate projects in some cases in earlier years. And as a matter of fact, what I, which I did not say is that this year compared to last year, Monroe County's allocation actually increased by 23%, so we're excited about that as well. Additional questions? Nothing online? Okay, well, what you probably can do at this point in time, if we have no questions, we're going to keep this open, the form open until 8 o'clock. But you can see along the wall, we have various experts from the department that have involved with us this evening as well, and they have projects that are slated in Monroe County, so we'll take an opportunity to talk to them about their projects and to get a little bit, you know, more knowledge as to what's going on in Monroe County. Again, if you ever have any questions, the information is there, and you can give us a call at that point in time. That concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Carrier 1, this concludes the 2018 Work Program Public Hearing Presentation and Comment portion. However, you can still write your comments on our comment box below, or you can send your comment via email at wpcomments@dotstate-fl.us, or you can send your comment, or you can mail it no more than 10 days following the date of this hearing to be included as part of the public record. You can send it to our district's address, which is District 6 Communications Office at 1,000 Northwest 111th Avenue, Room 6134, Miami, Florida, 6134. And also the, sorry about that, you can get the right address there. It's one more time, 1,000 Northwest 111th Avenue, Miami, Florida, 6134, room number 6134, Miami, Florida, 33172. The phone number is 305-470-5349. Now, as we were doing previously, we're going to speak to some of the project engineers and staff members of District 6 to inform us of some of the ongoing projects and some of the projects that are going to be happening in the near future. We spoke to Mr. Pablo Roscoe, who talked to us about the bridges. We talked to Kevin Schott, who explained to us a little bit about the landscape work that's taking place, and Natalie Araganta, some of the work that's being done, part of DDIR. We also spoke to Ms. Antonia Adams, who described to us what the work program is all about, and Mr. Harold Esdunis, who basically explained how important it is for, to attend or to engage in the 2018 five-year work program. Now, we're going to speak to Mr. Anthony Sabag, or Tony Sabag, and he's going to talk to us about the high-intensity activated crosswalks. Now, we're going to take a quick brisk walk now to that area we were previously. We're going to walk through and talk to Mr. Anthony, who's going to join us right now. Tony, thanks so very much for joining us here. Thank you. You're providing us some information about the high-intensity activity across. Now, can you tell us a little bit about this project and when construction will begin and what residents expect? We understand it's on State Road 5, so give us a breakdown.
Okay, so the project is located along North Roosevelt Boulevard in Key West. It's expected to start February 22nd, 2019, next year. The project is anticipated to last 200 calendar days, which equates to seven months, and the construction cost is 1.6 million. Now, the project consists of installing five pedestrian crosswalks, also known as, the specific type is called high-intensity activated crosswalk, also referred to, you've heard referred to as a Hawk signal. So the five locations are at or near the existing flashing beacons and on North Roosevelt Boulevard, and generally, the locations along North Roosevelt Boulevard are near the 24 Hotel, 24 North Hotel and Starbucks, which is south of the US-1 Triangle. There's another one at the McDonald's and Capital Bank, which is near 17th Street. Another one near Keys Plaza Shopping Center in the Publix, which is south of Kennedy Drive. A fourth one near the Fairfield Inn Suites by Marriott, which is near 7th Street, and then one near the US Customs Service Building, south of 5th Street. Now, in terms of what the residents can, can expect from the project, I'm going to separate that into during construction and final product. So during construction, there's going to be single lane closures between the hours of 9:00 AM and 4:00 PM. There's going to be sidewalk lane closures, sidewalk detours, and an increase in construction noise and dust and what have you. So we anticipate some traffic congestion, and residents might want to try to use Flagler Street whenever possible. Street lighting is going to be added, added onto the project at all the crosswalks, and then milling and resurfacing at the crosswalks so that we can install the new crosswalks. The expectations for the final product are also interesting, very interesting, and I'm going to talk about those in terms of how a Hawk signal works and, and explain that in, in two phases. One, what the drivers' expectations are, and the other, what the, what the pedestrians' expectations are. So for that, I'm going to use my visual aids to discuss-
Sure, and I'm going to step on, you could just show it to the, to the camera so they can see it more better.
Okay, so we're going to, we're going to go through the six steps of a Hawk signal. So, in step one, drivers will see all indication lights are dark, and there's no pedestrian in the, in the crosswalk waiting to cross. And the pedestrian signal will maintain a "don't walk" symbol, so the pedestrian who wants to cross the street will simply need to push the push button to activate the system. Put that down. For step two, drivers will see a flashing yellow light for a few seconds when pedestrians push the button. Driver should reduce speed and prepare to stop, and then pedestrians will see the "don't walk" symbol, and they should wait until the signal signals them to walk. So step three, drivers will see the flashing, go to a steady yellow light, warning them that indication will soon turn to a steady red light. Pedestrians will continue to see the "don't walk" symbol until, until such a time that we bring vehicles to a stop. Step four, drivers will see a steady red light, just like they do on normal traffic signals. Pedestrians will then see the "walk" single, signal, advising them that it's safe to, to Step five, at some point, drivers are going to see an alternating flashing red light as pedestrians cross the street. During this period, drivers are required to stop at the stop line, like they would on a normal intersection, and then pedestrians may proceed with cautions once they determine that the, that it's safe to cross. So the "walk" indication will change to a flashing countdown, and that indicates how much time they have remaining before they can have to get to the other side. So finally, step six, drivers will see all lights are darkened again, and at the end of the flashing countdown, and, and they may continue to proceed through the crosswalk if it's clear. Pedestrians will see the "don't walk" symbol as they did at the beginning, and they need to activate the push button to start the cycle all over again.
Wonderful, we really appreciate you breaking it down. Now, they could always find information on fdotmonroe.com for information on projects like such. Tony, I want to thank you very much. Any other information you'd like to share about this project?
No, I, I think it's going to be a safe, a safety improvement to the area, much needed. I think it's going to provide a lot of benefit to the community because you're going to have clear opportunity for pedestrians to see, actually have an action to press a push button, and have a signal that tells them when to walk and when not to walk. And then for the driver, it's going to give them a clear indication, meaning a yellow light to slow down or a red light to stop. And then the benefit of the Hawk is also that when it's not in use, it stays in that dark position, and motorists are unaffected and they can continue moving through North Roosevelt Boulevard. So we look forward to the improvement.
Thank you very much, Tony. And again, we're here located in the venue, you can come find out more information, like Tony explained to us about the Hawk. Carefree to pass by, we're here until 8:00 PM. Tony, thank you very much for your time. And now we're going to talk to Ms. Judith Clarkson, Monroe County Director of Engineering Services. How are you, Judy? How are you?
Hi.
Thanks very much for joining us. Now here, can you tell us a little bit about the Monroe County's Engineering Department?
Well, our engineering department has five staff, including myself, and we're responsible for roads, bridges, stormwater, all sorts of right-of-way permitting, anything on the unincorporated county roads. So we're, we're pretty busy, we're a small staff. A couple of years ago, the road maintenance department and the carsound toll staff was put under me, so all road things now are in one department, and that was a great fit.
So can you explain how Monroe County works with FDOT to minimize impacts of traveling public businesses and residents?
Sure. I, myself, in engineering, we of course have gotten over the years a lot of funding from DOT to help us on our local roads with bridge projects, road repair projects. Also, as I said, we have a small staff, and I have reached out to the department for technical assistance with our bridges, the structure staff, and also traffic operations. So that's been much appreciated, we're good partnership. I know our planning people also, they have a good partnership with DOT. Monroe County is not part of an MPO, Metropolitan Planning Organization, so DOT provides funding for transportation planner position to do all of the studies, travel time studies on US-1, that's conducted every two years, and other studies and planning functions to help minimize traffic impacts and things like that.
Well, Judy, thank you very much for explaining to us a little bit about the Monroe County office. Appreciate your time, and thank you very much for joining us here in our Facebook Live.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. After Judy, we're going to take a little break here and then walk around just a tad bit to show you about our 2018 five-year work program here in Monroe County. Now, it's only 7:14, so you still have some time to come if you are nearby. I'd like to share, the address here is 2798 Overseas Highway, 2798 Overseas Highway, or again, we're here until 8:00 PM. We still have some time for you to come. So now, just a few, just very quickly here, a little bit about what's expected. Again, we have many informational tables available that you can come and see, as far as information about several projects, that you can come and get information available here in Monroe County. Again, we advise you to visit our website, fdotmonroe.com. I'd like to also send you the information to call in if you have any comments, 305-470-5349, or you can shoot us an email, wpcomments@dotstate-fl.us. And then just a few, we're going in to welcome our communications manager, Ms. Tish Berger, and talk to us about the public information office, you know, how we communicate with the public regarding future ongoing transportation. We're going to welcome in Ms. Tish, Tish Communications Office. How are you, Ms. Tish?
Very well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Harold. We're ready for our 2018 Monroe County Work Program. Now, Tish, tell me a little bit about the PIOA- Now, Tish, tell me a little bit about the PIO office and how they communicate with the public regarding ongoing future projects.
Well, the public information office in District Six is kind of the central focal point for the public to reach out to the department, to find out who they can talk to about projects, to get information about those projects, to learn what's coming up if they have a concern about an ongoing construction project. We get dozens of calls every day from members of the public on a wide variety of topics.
And some are some of the ways that FDOT District Six is communicating with the public? What are some of the tools?
Well, we use a variety of methods. We go through all phases of transportation development, so we work with the planning office, with the PD&E office, with the design, with construction, with maintenance. We work with traffic operations. We have public meetings. We have information on a website, fdotmonroecounty.com, where people can go and see all of the different projects that we're doing in Monroe County and get information about all of those projects. So we use a variety of different methods.
Thank you so very much for your time. Appreciate it. And everyone here joining us on our Facebook livestream, we're going to give just a quick tour again before we sign off on our tour. Anything else you'd like to say, Ms. Tish?
Thank everybody for participating. This is a very, very important portion of our project development phase, and we'd love to have everybody's feedback on what we have proposed for the future.
Thank you, Tish. Appreciate your time. As just a few, we're going to invite you, for those who are just tuning in, we're here at the venue, the Marathon Building, located 2798 Overseas Highway. We're here until 8:00 p.m., so you still have some time to come by, find out information about some of the ongoing and proposed projects taking place here in Monroe County. If you aren't able to come by and find some information about these projects, it's okay. You can visit our website, fdotmonroe.com. If you missed the beginning of the broadcast, no worries. It will be available on our Facebook page. Make sure that you like it, that's MyFDOT on our Facebook, and also our Twitter account Like to again welcome those who are just joining or tuning in to our Facebook livestream. You can provide your comment right below. You can go ahead and write it below, and we will get back to you. Just make sure you provide how we can contact you via email or also through Facebook, we contact you. Or you can shoot us an email, wpcomments@dotstate-fl.us. We're going to show you right now that on screen. The phone number is 305-470-5349. Now, if you'd like to get some of the materials that were shown at this public hearing, no worries, we got you covered. You can visit the website, that's fdotmiamidade.com/work-program-public-hearings. That's where you could obtain all the information that was available here at the 2018 Monroe County Five-Year Work Program. I'd like to read you some tidbits about some of the priorities that we have in FDOT that we look forward to really standing by. And as the department's top priorities are safety and the preservation of the state highway system or existing FDOT roads, the department also prioritizes capacity improvements and other projects such as landscaping, intelligent transportation systems, and service patrols. We coordinate directly with federal and local governments, including transportation planning organizations, county commissions, and municipalities. Transit airports, seaports, rail, bicycle, and pedestrian travel programs also receive state and federal transportation funds. Now, District Six covers Miami-Dade and Monroe Counties, which is home to more than 2.6 million residents, who travel more than 56 million vehicle miles per day. I read some more information here about FDOT, as the state road system includes 700 miles of roadway, which when all lanes are considered, equals close to 3,000 lane miles. Now, our residents are served by seven public airports, 78 private airports, two rail lines, two deep-water ports, and three fixed guide-away systems, which include the Tri-Rail, Metro, and Metro-Mover. Now, just to give you a breakdown of what occurred here earlier in our Facebook livestream, we spoke to many of the individuals that participated in our 2018 Work Program here in Monroe County, which included Ms. Antonia Adams, who discussed to us about the work program and what it's all about. Mr. Harold Desdunes, who spoke about how important it is to get the public engaged in such activities as the 2018 Work Program. Also, Mr. Pablo Orozco, who talked to us about the bridges. He informed us 58 state bridges are located in the state of Monroe County, and he also gave us information in regards to the Cow Key Channel Bridge Rehabilitation Project. Again, we're here until 8:00 p.m. You can also provide your comments on Facebook on our comment box below. I'd like to read to you one more time the address of the venue, 2798 Overseas Highway. We're here until 8:00 p.m. on this beautiful Friday evening. Enjoy yourselves, enjoy some of the transportation information. Again, once again, thank you for tuning in. As far as here's our 2018 Monroe County Work Program continues. We're about to go ahead and conclude now. I'd like to go ahead and again, once again, thank you very much for tuning in to our Facebook livestream. Again, make sure to follow us on our Facebook page and on our Twitter account, which is If you didn't get an opportunity to comment during our livestream, no worries, you can send us an email, wpcomments@dotstate-fl.us, or you can give us a call at 305-470-5349. You can also send in your comment, you can mail it in at our district office, that's 1,000 Northwest 111th Avenue, Room 6134, Miami, Florida, 33172. Make sure you address it to the public information office. With that being said, I'd like to thank you very much for tuning in on our Facebook livestream. Again, we're here until 8:00 p.m. You can come and join us, and we'll catch you next year. I've been Rodolph Roman. Thank you for tuning in. Have a good night.